Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council's special meeting on Thursday, September 10, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Public participation is available to this meeting. People can attend in person, or they can watch the meeting live on Channel 4, or go to LHCaz.gov/tv. If you do not, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Grove.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the council on issues within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments must be limited to three minutes or less. And if you want to address something on tonight's agenda, we ask that you wait till our time so we can have a two-way conversation. We cannot have a two-way conversation during a Call to the Public. You do not have to sign up for the meeting to speak, but we do have several that have, so we'll go ahead and start there. There is a light indicator box next to the city clerk. Excuse me. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means one minute is remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. So with that being said, just keep an eye on the indicator box. Also, we'll make a sound after the three minutes as well. So first, we have Wendy Beffort. Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Is the microphone on? I didn't check it.
It's green.
Oh, perfect. It's on. We're on.
It's green. Hi, my name is Wendy Beffort, and I'm a resident here in Lake Havasu. I recently read Havasu News article titled, "Mohave County Supervisors Want Better Enforcement of Businesses That Violate State Requirements." The article reports that some of the county supervisors want the public health director to crack down on businesses not complying with the governor's mandates. One supervisor, Ron Gould, however, called the governor's rules arbitrary and capricious. Our attorney general also called them arbitrary and unfair. That said, you are taking direction from the governor, who is arbitrarily making decisions. In response to the businesses who aren't complying, the county attorney in this article, Lenore Knudsen, said that hurts other businesses because the playing field is no longer level. Some businesses are operating in compliance, making little to no money. Other businesses are essentially refusing to comply with the law, and they've garnered all the business. They've garnered all the business by not complying. That statement speaks for itself. We, the people, have chosen to patronize businesses who don't follow arbitrary and capricious guidelines. We want you to think for yourself. Stop blindly following everything Governor Ducey says and does. We are Lake Havasu City, and it's time we push back on the government overreach. I'm not a public speaker, just kidding. I'm asking you to remove your proclamation regarding the masks, but I want you to make sure that everybody knows they are free to wear one if they feel safer. And they should, if that makes them feel safer. As for me personally, I will not forget the businesses who refused me entry for not wearing a mask. And I will absolutely continue to patronize the businesses who allow me to make my own decisions about my personal health. They have certainly garnered all of my business. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up was Greg Beffort.
I want to thank you again for the extended time that you gave me the other day. In all fairness to the mayor, the other day when you met with us, you seemed unaware of much of the evidence and statements from medical professionals and scientists regarding the contradictions between what the CDC and WHO and Dr. Fauci has been reporting about this disease, the efficacy of masks, social distancing, and all those things. And in light of what the CDC said recently regarding the number of deaths, that 10,000 figure, if you extrapolate that down to Mohave County and Lake Havasu City specifically, think about how minimal that number ultimately is going to be. Think about that. Out of the 100,000, 10,000 were only ones that they could reasonably confirm to be COVID deaths. Think about how that extrapolates down to Mohave County and Lake Havasu City specifically in terms of the numbers. Now you are made aware that there is evidence and testimony from not just me and the people you heard from the other day, but other scientists and medical professionals that refute the measures that have been imposed, both constitutionally, medically, and scientifically. And so my recommendation to you is that, so that we don't have this one-way dialogue, you agendize this. You put this item up on the agenda. And I think it's only fair to the people that have not been represented on the other side of this, the impacts that I talked about the other night. Get this out in front of the entire vote of the council and make a decision. But make one based on all of the evidence. You have an obligation to consider both sides. Both sides. And on a microcosm level, we're talking about the people in Havasu who support wearing masks versus those that don't. Neither one have the science wrapped down on this. You need to sit down and evaluate both sides respectively. And for the benefit of our constitutional rights, until you get an opportunity to agendize this, and again, my recommendation is to be to get that subcommittee up and going. Evaluate information from both sides to make a determination. You owe that to the people that are being impacted by this right now. As far as the constitutionality of it goes, and until you make that decision, you have an obligation, every one of you swore to uphold the Constitution. You have an obligation to suspend any impacts on people's constitutional rights, including businesses, which ones are essential and can open, which ones should open by certain metrics, the mask requirements, the social distancing, anything that infringes on our constitutional rights. Now that you know what you know, you have an obligation to evaluate both sides. Get it to a vote, so we know where every one of you stand on this, and make a decision. You know, people ask me, Jesus, how does a governor, 10 seconds?
Yes.
How does a governor who stomps on our constitutional rights, has the audacity to stand up there and hold them up as his rationale for violating his mask requirements? How do you do that? You know, David, you took an oath three times to uphold the Constitution. You carry a pocket Constitution around with you, don't you? Well, show them how easy it would be for Ducey to take that thing out and throw it on the ground and step on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. The next person that requested to speak is Sarah Jones.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm sure you guys are probably getting tired of me, but I would rather be home with my family too than continue to try to ask for this. But here we are. Cal, I didn't wake up yesterday to the good news that the proclamation was going to be lifted. Can we shoot for tomorrow morning? Okay? We all should know by now regarding the masks and the proclamation, we all should know by now that healthy people should never wear masks. We all should know that masks are dangerous for healthy people, and they cause countless serious health issues. One of them being that they significantly suppress your immune system, weakening our body's natural immunity and ability to fight off the illnesses. With our winter visitors coming in here shortly, we also have the return of our weather, the fall. It's getting hot, it's cold, it's hot, it's cold. And then we have our regular flu season that is upon us. But it would be grossly irresponsible to continue with the mask proclamation even one more day. By removing all masks, today, if we have them all removed them, it will give their bodies a chance to rebuild its immune system, allowing their bodies a chance to fight off what will naturally happen in the fall. By continuing the proclamation, those who continue to wear masks will be even more susceptible to all of the illnesses that are coming in the fall. And then we may face another outbreak potentially. This could be worse than if we just don't take them off. And that could create another lockdown, repeat of the last six months. Masks do way more harm than they do any healthy person any good. And hopefully, when you lift a proclamation, if you lift it tonight, so people's immune system can have a chance to recover, because we don't want to wait for the faked benchmark-type numbers for us to tell us it's okay to come out. We don't want to wait till October 15. We all know that the CDC and Arizona Health Department is a joke. They have lost all of our trust and faith. So the effects of that, how they have handled COVID, has been catastrophic beyond measure. And none of their guidelines have ever made sense with logic or common sense. Cal, in addition, I'm pleading with you to lift the proclamation tonight. I'd like to ask one more favor. And it's for the children of Lake Havasu City. Would you please un-cancel Fright Night for them on Main Street? It gives them a safe place to trick-or-treat rather than trick-or-treating in the streets in the dark with no sidewalks. I think that they should be okay by then. And then I hope that you do light up the English Village. I don't know if you have anything to do with that or not, the city, but our kids deserve some of this magic and hope. They have suffered quite a bit in silence this entire time. So quality of life outweighs the risk. 99.7% survival rate, think we're okay. We're counting on you, Cal. Counting on you to lift this. Can you please lift this tonight? Okay? Don't wait till October 15. And please opt us out. All right? Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Janet.
Hello. Mayor and council.
And Janet, if you could just state your last name for the clerk.
Oh, Janet Grippy.
Thank you.
I am very concerned about the testing blitz going on in this county and wanted to let you know my thoughts about it. Could you please listen over there? You're not listening. Thank you. Lake Havasu is now doing 16 hours a day, seven days a week, free testing with no end date. That seems very excessive. The PCR test inherently yields many false positives as a test for a segment of RNA that is present in our own cells and in other microbes potentially. It is not at all specific to SARS-CoV-2. That genome has never been determined. You likely know this if you look up the video by expert Andrew Kaufman, M.D. And we asked you to look at that the other day, Cal. There are other videos that go deeper into science if you're interested. What is the benefit of testing asymptomatic people? Just to boost the cases, I suspect, in order to get money from somewhere? Let's stop testing also unless people are symptomatic. Their doctors can do that, and get all businesses open and get on with it. I suspect that labs are making a fortune testing as our local and state governments, all at the expense of our personal liberties. Our numbers seem to be very low. That is great. Why do a testing blitz with a faulty test that isn't even specific? What is there to gain? It's time to take a hard stand for reason and personal freedom, including health freedom, what is right, and forget about whatever money may be at stake. There is no freedom without health freedom. Let's let this virus pass through the population like they always have. No masks needed, as we have never done this for any prior pandemics. Now it's the flu vaccine they are pushing, clearly to keep the numbers up also. More vaccines, more money. It seems the goal, whether it's COVID-19 or the current flu shot push, is to keep the numbers up, to keep the state of emergency going, which includes lockdowns and mask proclamations. Havasu has a fragile economy on a good day. Much more of these draconian policies, and we will have nothing left other than Walmart and the for-profit hospital and a bunch of retirees on fixed incomes. At the worst, we could end up with an authoritarian government with vaccination passports, et cetera. This is not America. It would be nice to see Lake Havasu City evolve into a balanced economy with plenty of jobs for young people, as well as the great retirement activities for our seniors. Sweden and several other countries chose to protect their most vulnerable cities, but allowed the population at large to carry on as usual, and you can read about the outcomes yourself. There may have been a few more deaths on the front end of the curve, but there is evidence that they reached herd immunity much faster and are doing quite well now. We have chosen the opposite. To wear masks and isolate ourselves, we have simply delayed the inevitable. We need to protect our most vulnerable, allow life to go on amongst the healthy, and reach herd immunity. As a safe coronavirus vaccine is a pipe dream, as they have spent decades and billions of dollars and have still not come up with a safe one. The AstraZeneca vaccine trial was just put on hold, as I'm sure you know, due to serious neurological complications. I don't know what else to say. Hopefully, reason will prevail. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during the Call to the Public? Yeah, so just make your way up, sir, and then Karen, you can go next. If you can just state your name first and last for the record.
Dave Palmer.
Dave, you go ahead and lift the microphone up a little bit, just so... Thank you.
I grew up in this town. I went to elementary, smoke tree, junior high, and high school in this town. Then I moved away for a little while, and now I'm back. I've loved this town ever since, you know, little guy. My 12-year-old daughter was going to come here today to talk to you guys about how it's affecting her about wearing masks, because she refuses. I refuse too. You want a mask? This is the mask I wear in the businesses, when they require it, when I have to go in that business. Because this is all BS. You all know it. Everybody knows it. Did we have an issue with those protesters in this town when they came around? Did they riot? Did they burn our town down? No, they didn't. Why didn't they? Because the citizens stood up and went out there too, armed. It's the same thing. We're being forced to do shit we don't want to, and it's not going to happen. The citizens are going to rise up and stop it. If it's just pure defiance or whatever. You know? That's the way this is going to roll. You need to get rid of these mandates and not listen to the BS. Because you all know it is BS. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen, can you just state your name for the record?
My name's Karen Vanderjack. Okay, I am addressing this mainly to Cal. I'm really upset. I am a Christian woman, and I am at my wit's end. And when I get upset, I fight the battles. And I'm going to tell you a true story about where I did fight a battle, and I don't want to go there with you. When they said we were on lockdown again on July 3, my daughter had a surgery planned at the Surgery Center. Of course, it was not the diarrhea kind, but it was important. And she lives in California, so she had to come back and forth. She had to do the COVID test. She had to come back for a pre-test. She had to turn down work. She works in the Hollywood industry, so she had to turn down work. She says, Mom, this is costing me about $1,000 when they said it was closed down. She says, Mom, I've lost jobs. It cost me this much money. So I got busy. Mama Bear gets busy. And so I found out who was the person who decided to close that Surgery Center. It was the CEO of the hospital. So I wrote a letter to the CEO of the hospital. And I said, sorry, but we're going to have to sue you. We will sue you in small claims court. Because my daughter, she needed to have this surgery. I explained why. It's personal. I'm not going to tell you. And she lost this much money. And she's made trips back and forth. You have severely inconvenienced us. Not only that, money is lost. So therefore, we will be taking you to small claims court. So about 7 o'clock that night, we get an email back. It was the CEO of the hospital. He goes, I decided I will open the Surgery Center after all. Well, that's what it took. It was his money, his personal money. You have made the personal decision on your own that this was the right thing to do. We have given you every reason, every reason in the world, to stop this silly mandate. You could say, I believe in the mask, and I encourage you to wear the mask, but the mandate is over. That's all we're asking. It was a small thing. I don't want to have to... I will gather people together. I will promise you this. I've already got a lawyer set aside for a class-action suit, or it will be individual. I think individual will be better, because you'll be inconvenienced to go to court every single time someone's had to... They had to pay for a prescription for an asthma medicine, or they had to go to the doctor and take a day off of work. You're responsible. And all we're asking is this little thing. We've given you all the evidence in the world. I tried to give you evidence. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during the Call to the Public? Yeah, Frankie?
Hey, everybody. How are you doing? My name is Frankie Lyons. I'm with Veterans United Arizona. The trouble that we have is with our homeless. Everybody says we don't have homeless. We got over 52 homeless in this town. They cannot go shopping unless they spend $5 on a mask. Are you going to eat, or are you going to buy a mask? We don't take into consideration their needs. They can't get into the doctors. They can't go to the dollar store or a grocery store because they're not going to spend the money on a mask. You've hurt these people desperately. And from what I'm hearing from here, everybody in this town, or a good portion, has lost trust in you people, and that's wrong. You guys are there. We put you there. You're supposed to represent us, and you're not. I know that next month is the International Jet Ski Races. People are coming from all over the world. You think they're going to wear a mask because you asked for it? These people deserve better from you, all of you, not just Cal. He's catching the ration of it because he's sitting right there in the center. It's all of you who make the difference. And I'm asking, on behalf of our community, rebuild our trust. Remove the masks. Thank you.
John, did you want to speak? Just state your name for the record.
I just listened, but as I was sitting here, I wrote a bunch of notes. But I promise, I'll make it fast, and I'll make it fun, because, you know, last time, I was the one who was a little upset. Now, you know, other people do that for me. Besides, I just wanted to see you all again, really. Anyway, just so you know, you know, Cal knows that I've been around the hospital field for 20 years because of my son, you know, who was very ill, in and out of the hospital for 20 years. He passed away last year. But everything that we learned was your hands. You get all your viruses from your hands, not from your mouth. So if you want to have any kind of mandate, maybe we should make it, everybody doesn't have to wear a mask, but they have to wear gloves, because really, that's where you get most of the germs from, your hands. And I'm just going to kind of go down my little list here I made real quick. You know, we don't want to try and intentionally hurt anybody's business in here, right? But everybody in this little group I have and other groups, you know, have kind of gotten together and said, you know, we're just worn out on this, and we're only going to go to where people don't kick us out, you know? And so that's what's happening, is some of the businesses that are not kicking us out, we're going to more often. I go to a place to eat that, you know, I might have went once or twice a year. I'm going once or twice a week now, you know, because I don't get hassled. So that's what happens, you know? I used to go to her place every week. Now, I just went once because I ordered the food and went outside. You know, nothing against you. I just, you know, that's the way it is. This is not a one-size-fits-all for the whole country, right? We know we're different here in this area from a lot of places. Places on Montana where they have no cases, and they still had to follow some crazy rules. And I'm like, really? You know, that's ridiculous. It's just not a one-size-fits-all. Now, I didn't know you can't answer, so... But what I heard was that we were down to zero cases. That's what I heard. Let's see what else is on my little list here. You know, all the events that are being canceled, I mean, that's hurting a lot of people, you know? And a lot of people come to this town for these events. So when I heard, like, Run to the Sun, which is a big thing for me personally, because I'm a hot rodder and, you know, the whole bit, I mean, that is such a huge event for this city. So for that thing to be canceled, and even this far in advance, when we don't know where we're going to be in a month or two from now, to me, is crazy. But there's just a lot of events being canceled. I think that's really a bad thing, you know? As far as people thinking that, you know, we're some kind of conspiracy theorist here or something, I am proud to be a conspiracy theorist, because conspiracy theorist comes from the word "conspire", when people conspire against another. And a theorist is someone who puts together pieces of evidence and comes up with a conclusion. Wow, is that fast?
It was fast. If you could conclude your thoughts, that would be good.
Okay, let me give you my last ones then. Please make the masks optional for whoever wants to wear them. The people can keep their little plastic things up at their stores if they want to. And I want to know how many people were here on last Tuesday, two nights ago, that came up here and fought to keep the masks? I didn't see any. I don't know if there was any. But, you know, the people want the thing gone, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the Call to the Public? Yeah, please make your way up to the podium, state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Goral. And I speak on behalf of everybody that's already spoken, feel the same way about everything. If we can have events here, like the last weekend we had here, and people from out of town coming here, all these people, and even walking in restaurants where you wear a mask just walking in, and you take it off, what's the difference? You're walking in with it or without it? There's no difference. And you have all these people who are from out of town and everything else. And yes, it brings in revenue for Havasu. And yes, that's what we're all about. The city needs it, could use it. But why give up on all the other events that we have to have, or, you know, postphoning? It just makes no sense. We need to just move on with this and go ahead and do away with this. And like the gentleman before me said, make it an optional. People want to be, you know, insecure about stuff. And, you know, the medical's important, very important. But everybody else's lives are important too, and how they want to live them. And let these businesses open up and continue to thrive and make their, you know, their living, instead of hurting everybody. Because you're bringing people into this town and celebrating like every weekend's a holiday. And that doesn't seem to be a problem to anybody else. It's starting to make it a monetary issue, and that everybody else don't matter. Open up and let it be. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during... Yeah, please. Yeah, just state your name for the record.
All right, my name's Troy Odell. I used to work at the London Bridge Resort. I work for Hicks now. And I'm going to tell you firsthand, if anyone in this room was to have the virus, it'd be me. I've been front-hand working in Smiths, Bashas, all the grocery stores. And at one, at first started, people were rushing in like crazy and didn't know what to do. And neither did I, but I just, I keep my head down and keep working. And it's gotten to the point where, like, as a worker, you walk in with a smile on your face, with a positive attitude, and you're being told, put a mask on. First thing they say. It's hard to respond to that, to not get an attitude to that. It just ruins it, you know what I mean? It ruins the spirit. I feel like I've been here in this town since 2014, and I feel like we're dropping the ball. Like, you guys are dropping the ball big time. Like, it needs to be picked up, and it needs to keep rolling. Like, there's a lot of people that love everybody, and then there's people that are like, oh, he did this. He's a bad guy. Put him to shame, blah, blah, blah. Put him, you know, send him to hell. I think this town is about second chances. And I think everyone deserves a second chance. And I think the more we get into the virus, the masks and everything, the more it brings out the bad in people. And it's bringing out the bad in me. Like, it makes me think bad things that I don't want to think. Like, being told to wear a mask, it just brings out a bad person in me that isn't there when people are like, oh, hi, how are you doing? You know, it's just, it's not a leadership, like, of you guys to be doing that, to be making people wear masks. You know what I mean? I feel like it's not a leader role, like, you guys are the leader's lead, you know? I don't think that the virus was ever a big deal. I've been working around people... I've been around the population the whole time, around everybody. And I've never gotten it, never worn a mask, never gotten sick. I don't know what the big deal is, you know? I mean, yeah, if you're... I mean, yeah, if you're, if you're scared, stay home. If you're old, stay home. I haven't been to church in, like, five, six months. I go to church every Sunday. My dad died in this town. My dad, I'm adopted by my pops, and my pops, he was my hero, and now my son's my hero, and my son looks just like him. Like, this town has brought miracles my way. And, like, the way you guys are going is, like, downhill. It's like, go up, like, just, you know, just, I don't know, just, I feel like you guys kinda dropped the ball a little bit, and I think you guys can do better. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right. All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and cla-, close the, uh, public, uh, the call to the public. Moving on to item five on the agenda, uh, which is a vote to adjourn to executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
And a second? And we have to say, so a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We do, yeah, we do have one written comment. Yeah, Ms. Williams.
Sorry. We did receive one written comment, um, with the title of "Public Comment for City Council's Special Meeting, September tenth, 2020. Mayor Sheehan and Councilmembers, I am urging you to rescind the mask mandate in Lake Havasu City immediately. People are sick of politicians continuously moving the goalposts by extending mandates and restrictions on their freedoms. I know you probably, I know you'll probably point to decreasing numbers of new cases to justify keeping the mandate in effect, but if you study the curves in other states and countries, you'll see similarities in almost all of them. Those curves illustrate how the virus naturally runs its course regardless of mask-wearing. In fact, Daniel Horowitz published an article on August thirteenth showing that in Kansas, the countries that opted out of the governor's mask mandate had a lower rate of infection than those that didn't. There are many doctors and scientists that state mask-wearing makes the individual more susceptible to the virus due to cross-contamination, touching your face more often, and a compromised immune system, along with causing a myriad of other health issues. Sadly, you seldom see or hear these doctors and medical experts as they are routinely censored by corporate media and tech giants such as Facebook and YouTube, or pressured into silence by state medical boards and even some of their colleagues. And then there's the social toll of this mandate. This is a very contentious issue, and it has served to further divide us as citizens. Businesses have become increasingly aggressive toward customers for non-compliance, and many of them won't even honor medical exception, exemptions, claiming they'll be fined or shut down if they allow anyone in without a mask. Maskers are publicly, publicly berated and others simply because they prefer to breathe fresh air instead of carbon dioxide. I have friends with asthma and COPD who wear masks in public just to avoid being yelled at or getting dirty looks. It's ridiculous. Face masks are unhealthy and ineffective against the virus. Point one-two microns in diameter and forcing healthy people, especially children, to wear them is dangerous, unconstitutional, and borderline criminal. Mask mandates have nothing to do with public health, it's all about control. I don't need the government to protect my health, that's my responsibility. I need the government to protect my rights, and that's not currently happening. Constitutional rights are not suspended during a crisis. I want my America back. Submitted by Ron Danielson.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion, uh, from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Dolan? I think, uh, Councilmember Dolan, have you, uh, can I, oh, I should take care of it?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to executive session. All right, uh, welcome back to the special meeting, uh, from September tenth, 2020, uh, the Lake Havasu City Council. Uh, we are on item seven. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene to the special meeting.
So moved, Ms. Mayor.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Uh, we'll now move on to item eight, which is our public hearing. Uh, we have item eight point one, which is discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with open meeting law following the executive session regarding the evaluation of, uh, the city manager. Uh, so, the, uh, council has met in several executive sessions to discuss the evaluation of the city manager. Uh, we did an in-depth analysis of his performance. Uh, the council determined that a six-month professional development plan is the correct course of action at this time. Uh, the city manager will be reevaluated in six months. Is there any other discussion from council on that item before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Uh, we don't, uh, have anyone in person, although we are accepting in-person, uh, attendance, but I believe Ms. Williams has, uh, an item, or, um, a comment that was sent in from a citizen via email, so if you, uh, wanna take care of that for us?
This comment was received on Thursday, September tenth, at one thirty-eight, I'm sorry, uh, twelve forty-one P.M., with the subject line of "Special Meeting, Public Hearing Comment. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. After reviewing all the facts, I hope you make the wise choice today and to, and terminate the city manager. I would never wish this upon anyone, but in this case, it is necessary. His personal life is chaotic and has brought negative attention to our city. He has stated very derogatory things on camera, which were watched by thousands of residents. His history of drunkenness, wild, wild bar visits, and immature choices will surely lead to trouble in the near future if he is allowed to keep his job. It is very embarrassing to have Mr. Knutson as the face of our city at this point. Each one of you has said it is your number-one priority to get this positional analysis done and get it done right. While the city manager led Baker Tilly down a path that satisfied his own personal agenda and did not consult with any others to get their input, the end result was a two-year study that he led in the wrong direction, or should I say, in his own direction. This led to the current morale problem citywide and heavy distress in the city leadership. This led to an end result on the analysis that made no sense and did not fix any problems, but made them worse. This also led to a waste of ninety thousand in taxpayer dollars for this analysis that is completely useless now. He can blame this on Baker Tilly all he wants, but the fact of the matter is he should have fired them long ago or led them to the correct conclusion. He failed to do so and has also failed as a leader all along. He did not gather any input from the people who know the city best, his subordinates. If I were to lead a project that costs ninety thousand dollars and it turned out to be a failure and, and the money was a complete waste, rest assured, I would be fired. If I were one of Knutson's subordinates and this, and did this, I would be fired. This is money that could have been used for salaries, but it is gone. If the city manager can't even lead a simple positional analysis, how is he going to lead the city? The answer is, he's done a very poor job at both. We need a leader who thrives on teamwork and delivers a great product, no matter how difficult the task is. We need a leader who consults with his team and doesn't think he has the best solution for every problem. This is basic leadership that a city manager should have before he's hired. I understand it is difficult to calculate during interviews, but the city manager snuck one by you guys, fed you a bunch of fluff, and now we are paying the price. I know all of you have spent several hours discussing this, and I am confident you will make the right decision. The residents and city workers deserve another city manager that is a true leader and makes correct decisions based on teamwork and common sense. We also need a leader who stays out of the bars, controls their alcohol intake, and displays professional behavior, both at home and at work, both at work and at home. The true character of Mr. Knutson has come out, and it's time to move on. Let's get him out of the way so we can get this positional analysis correct. He will continue to be a hurdle in this process if we do not move on. Thank you for listening. Submitted, submitted by Bob Boucher.
Thank you. Without any, uh, additional, uh, comments, uh, from, uh, the public, it, email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov or any in-person, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, moving on to item nine, uh, motion to adjourn?
Nope. I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It's, it's late. Very sorry, yes. Uh, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to direct staff to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? All right, we are ready to vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from, uh, Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Dolan.